Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year, welcome to 2016. This is the first meeting, a reorganization of the City Council. Ms. Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Councilman Abdallah.
Here.
Councilman Berry.
Here.
Councilman Constand.
Here.
Councilman Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Councilman Horvath.
Here.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Here.
Councilman Muscat.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. The records show that all our members are present. This portion of the meeting is a reorganization of the Dearborn Heights City Council, in which the members nominate an elected council chair. At this time, I will accept nominations for the council chair. I will accept all nominations in the order in which they are received. I will then proceed with a roll call vote. The first candidate to receive a majority vote of the members will become the council chair. What I will ask is if you want to speak and to keep everybody from stepping on each other, just put your hand out and then you'll be recognized and we'll proceed from there. So are there any nominations for the council chair?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Berry?
No. Go ahead.
Okay. Councilman Kaczynski.
Mr. Chairman, I put in place the nomination of the Honorable Marge Horvath, Councilwoman, to contend for the seat of council chair.
Councilman Kaczynski has put the nomination of Councilwoman Horvath in. Do we have any seconds for Ms. Councilwoman Horvath?
You don't need a second.
You don't need a second.
Don't need a second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Sir.
Councilman Berry.
Nominate myself.
Councilman Berry nominates himself. Are there any other nominations? Councilman Muscat.
Nominate Bob Constance.
Councilman Muscat nominates Councilman Robert Constance. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? At this time, the nominations will be closed. We will go in order of the nominations. I will ask, we have the nomination for Councilwoman Horvath. All those who would vote for Councilwoman Horvath?
Motion to close.
Thank you. Motion to close the nominations, please.
Support.
So close.
Councilman Berry made the motion to close the nominations, thank you.
Yes, support.
Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in wishing to vote for Councilwoman Horvath, please stick your hand out, please. We have Councilwoman Horvath, correct. Councilman Kaczynski. Councilman Constand. We have three votes.
Mr. Clerk, do we, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we need to go back and vote for that motion to close. Close the motion, motion made by Councilman Berry, supported by me, we should vote.
I'm so sorry, thank you for helping me. All those in favor of that motion to close the nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. You can see why I'm not the council chair. Okay, we have, going back once again, we have a vote for Councilwoman Horvath, from Councilwoman Horvath, from Councilman Kaczynski, from Councilman Constand. Are there any other votes? Councilwoman Horvath receives three votes. The second nominee was... Councilman Berry. I'm just writing something, thank you. Councilman Berry. All those who would like to vote for Councilman Berry, please stick out your hand, please. Councilman Berry. Councilman Abdallah. Councilman Berry and Councilman Abdallah, are there any other votes for Councilman Berry? No other votes? No other votes. We have two votes for Councilman Berry. Third nominee is Councilman Constand. Anyone wishing to vote for Councilman Constand, please stick out your hand, please.
Councilman Constand, you already voted.
You already voted.
Mm-hmm.
You already voted.
You voted for Marge. You voted for Marge.
Okay, we have Councilman Muscat and we have Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. That is, rounds out the seven. So for Councilman Constand, we have Councilman Muscat and Councilman Hicks Clayton. At this point, we do not have the four votes necessary to elect a chair. We will do this again. At this point, I would like to open up the nominations for Chairman of the Council, Councilman Berry.
I nominate myself.
Councilman Berry nominates Councilman Berry. Councilman Kaczynski.
Councilman Kaczynski nominates Councilwoman Marge Horvath for the position of council chair at Dearborn Heights.
Councilman Kaczynski nominates Councilwoman Marge Horvath. Any other nominations, Councilwoman?
To nominate Councilman Robert Constand.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton nominates Councilman Robert Constand. Are there any other nominations? Okay, at this point, we will take them in the order of which we receive the nominations after we receive a motion to close the nominations.
Make a motion to close.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Berry, seconded by Councilman Muscat to close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. For Councilman Berry, please stick out your hand if you'd like to vote for Councilman Berry. Any other votes, Councilman Abdallah? Any other votes? Any other votes? Two votes for Councilman Berry. Councilwoman Horvath. Who would like to vote for Councilwoman Horvath, please stick out your... Councilwoman Horvath? And the third nominee is Councilman Robert Constand. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, Councilman Muscat, Councilman Constand. We still do not have the necessary four votes to elect a chairman. We will try one more time, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I would like to open up the nominations for Chairman of the City Council. Anybody who'd like to make a nomination?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Councilman Kaczynski.
I continue to support Councilwoman Horvath for the position of council chair of the city of Dearborn Heights.
We have received a nomination for Councilwoman Horvath.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I nominate Robert Constance.
Councilman Muscat nominates Councilman Constand. Councilman Berry. Councilman Berry nominates Councilman Berry. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? At this point, I'd like a motion to close the nominations. Councilman Berry made a motion to close.
Second.
Councilman Hicks Clayton had her hand up, she supports. All those in favor?
Aye.
The nominations for council chair are now closed. Please indicate your vote by sticking your hand out. Those in favor of Councilwoman Horvath, please. Councilwoman Horvath, Councilman Kaczynski, are there any other votes? Are there any other votes? Are there any other votes? Second nominee was Councilman Constand, please stick out your hand. We have Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Councilman Muscat, did you have your hand up?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat? Councilman Constand? Are there any other votes for Councilman Constand? Any other votes for Councilman Constand? Last call for votes for Councilman Constand. Councilman Berry? We have two votes for Councilman Berry. Councilman Berry and Councilman Abdallah. At this point, honorable counsel, we have what's called a stalemate. According to the council rules of order, 502.22, if a chairman, chairwoman, and a chairwoman, chairman, pro tem are both absent, we don't have one, the clerk shall take the chair and call the roll, which we did. If a quorum is present, those present shall elect by a majority of those present a chairman, chairwoman for the meeting, or until the appearance of a chairman or chairwoman, or the chairmen or chairwoman pro tem. So at this point, we will have a temporary chairman. So I will take nominations for a temporary chair for tonight's meeting. Are there any nominat...
You know, I would note that this is, what the city clerk is saying, would be appropriate procedure, but it should be something that's chosen by the council. If you feel more ballots might be helpful, you could do that, or you could close and go into this process.
Yeah, in other words, we could vote to continue on with the ballot, or vote to elect a temporary chair.
That is correct.
First of all, parliamentary procedure doesn't come from the corporation council, although I recognize what you're saying. I don't know. Go ahead, I have nothing to say, I just, I'll go with the crowd.
Does anybody have anything to discuss regarding this issue? Would you like to continue this process?
Well, we're at, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We're gonna definitely have to have a chairman for tonight, because we've got a business to conduct. So it's my opinion that this council nominates a temporary chair for this meeting, and then we go through this again in the next meeting, the next regular...
Scheduled meeting.
Right.
Which will be January 25th, I believe.
Or have the clerk run the meeting?
Pardon me?
Or have the clerk run the meeting?
No, the clerk does not run the meeting. The council appoints a person. The clerk does not run the meeting.
The unfortunate thing is that we can't agree to a chairperson. I would think that if we could agree to a temporary, there should be no reason why we can't agree for that person to be the chair.
Yeah, see, that's it.
It's really, it makes, forgive me, all due respect, it makes no sense to appoint a temporary person amongst us. If you feel temporarily that person can satisfy that position, then let's just vote that person in on a permanent basis and move forward. I think we have much more important matters to move forward with, rather than who's going to temporarily run it. And then we run the issue of dealing with who is going to be chair, and you're gonna have the same thing going on that went on for the last two and a half, three weeks. Really, we're all adults here, we all know that the function of the chair, what the function of the chair is, and if there's somebody you feel comfortable with, let's make the motion and do it. Let's not be influenced by outside influence, let's not let other people guide us. Rule, vote from your stomach, what's your gut tell you? And go with that. We know we're gonna be sitting here going through this for the next six weeks, eight weeks, if we don't come to a decision now.
Does anybody else have any thoughts on this?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Someplace along the way, I understood that the city clerk may conduct a meeting under these circumstances. And I would want to defer to corporation council as to whether that understanding is an appropriate understanding, and come back at some future point, or at the end of this meeting, to determine who will be the permanent chair.
Well, Councilman Kaczynski, my assessment would be, and Councilwoman Horvath is correct. If there's an issue with regard to parliamentary procedure, it's decided by the council chair. But in this particular situation, in terms of who would end up making the decision, no, I do not believe that the city clerk would be appropriately the temporary chair of this body. Normally, under parliamentary procedure, the person has to be a member of the actual body, the legislative body, to serve in that capacity. That is pretty much standard in terms of the way it would be handled. So if this body decides to choose to use a temporary chair, then the person should be elected from this body. Further, one of the other things I would note is that the city charter says that the chair of the council shall be chosen at the first meeting. It is a mandatory direction, and there are a number of things that are important. I'd hate to see the mayor incapacitated in any fashion, but the council chair would act in the stead of the mayor if the mayor, for example, was incapacitated. And so, and then who knows what would end up happening? So it's a serious decision to make, certainly, but it's also one that's supposed to be made at the first meeting.
Mr. Clerk.
Councilman Berry?
If it pleased the council, do we think we could take a five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess would be appropriate. We are recessed for five minutes. We are going to reconvene the meeting, and we will accept nominations for the chair. Councilman Berry?
Nominate myself.
Councilman Berry nominates Councilman Berry.
Mr. Clerk, I'd like to nominate Councilman Constand.
Councilwoman woman Hicks Clayton nominates Councilman Constand. Are there any other nominations, Councilman Kaczynski?
I continue to nominate Councilwoman Marge Horvath for the chair.
Councilman Kaczynski nominates Councilwoman Horvath. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my name.
Councilwoman Horvath withdraws her name from consideration. At this point, we have two nominations, Councilman Berry, Councilman Constand. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Motion to close the nominations? Councilman Constand makes a motion to close the nominations, a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton indicated she was seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will take the vote in order of the nominations received.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Do any of the votes to the exclusion of those that were cast for Councilwoman Horvath valid as a, at this point, the previous votes before we took the break?
No. There was never a majority of four people, so those votes were...
However, the cast of numbers for the remaining candidates were, were they recorded?
Yes.
Okay. Would it be appropriate for me to change a vote?
Change a nomination or a vote?
Change a vote already recorded.
We're gonna revote, we're gonna take new votes now.
We're gonna take new votes now.
Leave that, that is not proper.
That's not proper, okay. That's what I was looking for, some...
Yeah, those nominations have been concluded, and the vote has been taken with no majority. So at this point, we have, nominations are closed, right, Ms. Secretary? And it was, made the motion and seconded, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I've been...
Okay, at this point, please signify by holding out your hand, should you wish to vote for Councilman Berry for chair. Councilwoman Horvath? Councilman Berry? Councilman Abdallah? Are there any other votes for Councilman Berry? Any other votes? That's three votes. Councilman Constand, please signify by holding your hand out. Councilman Kaczynski? Councilman Constand? Councilman Muscat? And Councilwoman Hicks Clayton? Congratulations, Councilman Constand, you are the chair of the 2016...
Thank you.
At this point, I will be turning the meeting over to our new chair. Our new chair...
Walter? I'm sorry, we need a motion to elect him now?
Need a motion to elect? Okay, thank you. Can we have a motion?
Take a motion to accept the election of Bob Constance as the council chair.
Second.
Second, the motion by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Kaczynski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Councilman Constand is unanimously accepted as a chairman. At this point, we will turn the meeting over to our newly elected chairman. He will continue with the election of a chairman pro tem, and the same procedure, and then we will go into the regular council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Council Secretary, for your assistance.
Council chair.
Thank you.
He's council chair. You know that he won one time?
Mr. Kaczynski?
I lost my game.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion for deputy chair. Nominations for council chair pro tem. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Councilwoman Horvath for deputy chair.
Is there a second?
Don't need a second.
You don't need a second.
Are there any other nominations? Councilman?
Chair, I nominate Lisa Hicks Clayton for council pro tem.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? All those in favor of...
Need a motion to close nominations.
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll vote for the council chair pro tem, first for Councilwoman Horvath, since she was nominated first. All those in favor of voting for Councilwoman Horvath as the deputy chair, please extend your hand like we did in the last vote.
Four, there's a fourth right there.
This is for Lisa, right?
No, this is for Marge.
This is for Marge.
Could you clarify that?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is for Councilwoman Marge Horvath.
Okay.
You got the record?
Correct. So that's Councilman Abdallah, Councilman Kaczynski, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, excuse me, Horvath, and Councilman Berry.
No need to take another vote.
You do for the record.
Mr. Chairman, I move the vote, vote, close the session, and indicate that Councilwoman Horvath is the co-chair.
So move. Any support? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nominations are closed. Councilwoman Horvath, congratulations.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Remember, buddy, I'm right under you.
I remember.
That could be a good thing.
We didn't do the...
We have to do the...
Now, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know this hasn't been done in the past, but since I'm the most senior person, age-wise, probably too, on the council, this is the moment that we change chairs if we choose. I choose to stay where I'm at, so everybody else, if you're happy where you're at, fine, if you want somebody else's seat...
Well, this is the clerk's seat.
Well, I know, you can't stay there, yeah. So if anybody wants to change, this is the time.
You'll sit there. I agree with you.
I'll sit in there.
Seniority rules.
You're staying here, David?
Didn't that for me?
No choice.
You like your spot? Not a big one.
No, that was a good idea. Why don't we be led in the pledge of allegiance by our state representative, Julie Plouecky?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Can I just make some suggestions that you all, you... Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kaczynski?
Move the agenda for the city council meeting of Dearborn Heights for this day, January 12th, be accepted as presented.
Is there support?
Second.
Second by Councilman Muscat. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council on December 8th, 2015.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. I move to approve the minutes for December 8th, 2015, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, as outlined in 4A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kaczynski?
The fund transfer 6A, and current claims 6-1 through 41 be approved as submitted.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Horvath. All those in favor, signify by...
Chairman, comments? Oh, you have discussion?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Absolutely, yes.
This is more of a comment for 6-8, which is the IT services. And of course, this is a contract that we have with city of Dearborn, so of course, we would pay that. However, I did want to bring attention, mostly it's for repair and maintenance, which I know we experienced quite a few different things, but I would like to see if we can give consideration to future discussion on more services, especially when we're talking, there's $100,000 being paid here, discussion regarding, for example, the website, maybe an app for people filing ordinance complaints and concerns, things like that, to see us utilize the IT a little bit more effectively. In fact, I did some research on this real quick, and it shows that 77% of respondents rate that local government websites essential to overall communities and public service safety and strategy. However, only 34% rated government agencies as being highly effective. So, and I think that would, is something that's warranted to give some review to.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
I respect the, I respect this recommendation, but I think that's something that should be brought up and discussed during our budget meeting.
Our IT person is here. Doug, is, do you have any thoughts or comments on how easily, or how difficult, or how expensive it would be to do that?
Good evening, Doug Felkamp, city of Dearborn, MIS department. And we're, we'll work with you as, as much as needed to make that happen, either with your existing website, or look at potential replacements for the website. We have an arrangement with a contracted person from the school district that assists with ours, and we've been looking at engaging him to make improvements to the website for the Heights as well.
Agreed.
So it, it can be part of the overall package. If you... So, it, it can be part of the overall package, if you use the tools that we use at very low cost, replacing the website outrightly. If, if you wanted a third party to do it and host it as you're doing it today, it would, you'd probably want to go out forbid on that, or RFP. So, but would be glad to work with you on that.
Yes.
The other things that are critical concern, and I, I agree that we would want any and all input for the web. There's oftentimes we've got criticism, and we need your assistance in order to accomplish this. But also very essential is the phone system that, that is on the brink of collapse, and we need to get that resolved.
Right, as part of the grant that we've gotten for Dearborn Heights with the $263,000 grant, part of that was to do point-to-point wireless. Your current connectivity between the buildings is based on old T1 connectivity that supports your telephone system today and is very, very limited in terms of your data. As soon as we get that point-to-point in place, you'll have much higher bandwidth, and you'll be able to upgrade the phone system. And I know we've been working with your consultant to help you select a phone system to be a replacement, but any new phone system will rely on that data connection. And that's, that's been a little bit of a stall point because of the line of sight, but we're, we're getting, and we're working with your staff to make that happen.
I think in the near future, Mr. Chairman, if you can invite Doug and the council, and, and we could have a good discussion regards to the things that we're looking forward to get accomplished and, and, and get to the point that we need to be at, so.
I think that's a great idea.
Councilman Kaczynski? Mr. Felkamp, you're suggesting that the, or somebody suggested that our phone system is not up to date.
Phone system needed to be replaced some time ago, and we're upgrading, as Doug indicated. We also, there's, I can't think of Mary's last name, but originally, yeah, she is well-recognized for school districts and areas. I think, Doug, you were impressed by her also, and so she's assisting us as we go through and upgrading that system.
Okay. As far as I know, there hasn't been any budget delegated to, to the phone, phone issues this year.
No, there, there's, there is. How much did we put in there? Yeah, and in fact, we got, we got a whole bunch of computers that we use the American Express credit system for, and you saw that on your agenda. So really, what we were doing is upgrading the entire system where we need to be, and then we'll be state-of-the-art. And that was the intent, and hopefully do it by this end of this budget year. I don't know if that's still possible or not, but.
Mayor, you mentioned computer systems. What was the concern about the inadequacy of the phone system?
Well, the system occasion.
They're both tied.
The system occasionally goes out, and the difficulty we had is that, I mean, it's outdated, the system that we're using. And also, the other thing that we ran into problems, but I would not say this is the major thing, is we have, I think we still had AT&amp;T, and then we had a different company. But I know more than one occasion, and maybe this has happened in the past, not new, but people would point to one another, and we were constantly having a problem. But the difficulty is, we couldn't conduct business without a phone, and people would call, and, and there would be no connection. That's why we've been urged that this thing's on its last breath, so it's extremely important to move on this. And I've expressed that to Doug on a few occasions, that the administration, and so we, we want to get moving on that.
Yeah, the.
Okay, is there a plan to move forward on it?
Yes. Okay. One other question.
And the phone system that they've got, a, a large number of the problems have actually been AT&amp;T-related, but the hardware is well outdated. It is no longer supported. So, as long as it keeps running, you're okay. To get replacements or even contracted help to work on it.
Can't be done.
They, they don't support that any longer. They'll, they'll want to sell you a new system.
One other question, the suggestion that Councilwoman Hicks Clayton offered, an app, you called it? Because I'm not, you know my background on computers. Is, is that suggestion revenue generating?
It would be ultimately, because if you're able to report ordinance issues, it would help them with connectivity for our residents' civic engagement. There are more eyes and ears in the community of our residents who are able, would be easily able to report, and that would generate revenue, as we know.
Alright, can we combine a meeting to bring these two issues?
Yeah, we, we could cover all of them, and anything, I mean, people are using multi-different ways of making communication to us. And so, I mean, we still occasionally get letters, although those are going by the wayside. We get emails, we get phone calls, we get all these. And so, what the Councilwoman's suggesting is, and if there's anything else on the horizon that we need to address, this would be the time to do it. So we want to be state-of-the-art, and that was the intent, that by July 1st of 2016, we would, we would do that. And the other item is that everybody then should have the same hardware, the same software. And one of the big items that I've been very concerned about was, I mean, I came from Ford Motor Company 14 years ago, I retired, I think it was. And we could all just talk with one another, we could schedule meetings. We can't, we could not do that because of the different computers and stuff. But I, I went from an environment where if I wanted to have a meeting with Doug, I'd go into his schedule, and I saw that he was available, unless he blanked out lunches and stuff. But if he was available at 11 o'clock, I scheduled it, and then I set the meeting thing, and he would confirm, and I never had to talk to him. And there's things like that in communication amongst employees that we, that we haven't done. And that's not new technology, that's stuff that 14 years ago, or longer than that, we were doing that for.
Right, and part of the network upgrade, and the fact that we've got everybody on modern equipment and common platform allows for that. The connectivity between our area and, and yours with the point-to-point wireless will allow us to even offer supporting applications, like he was talking about, the Outlook Exchange server. You're currently working with an outside company on that and paying a hosted fee for that. We can bring that in-house and give you those features, you know, at a, at a reasonable cost. And it, you know, we're not, our arrangement is to support the equipment. We've, we've done $100,000 a year. We technically haven't covered police and courts for that. We've talked in budget terms about what it'll take to add them on, but we've supported them the entire, what, nearly four years now. We've also brought in $263,000. We saved on your BSNA servers, another probably $30,000 worth of consultation and hardware that we just dropped in for the city. So, to date, you're pretty much, everything that we've provided has covered those, all of those costs, so. And, and we've had some challenges, police servers and that sort of thing had some real difficulties. We put in a new server there. We're implementing a new switch, network switch there over the Martin Luther King holiday. So, we're making progress, but a lot of it is in the back office pieces that allow all of the front office pieces to, to communicate, so.
Final question. We don't need additional consulting anyplace except Mr. Felkamp to, to resolve this issue.
I think we're, well, Mary's going to help on the phones, but it's up, it's up to all of us to decide. But my recommendation is you only use one advisor. I would not bring two or three, or you're going to start having the same problems we're having with the phones. I think you're better off, because if something goes wrong, we can call Doug and say, why isn't it working? Rather than Doug saying, well, I did my job, but, you know, Fred over there didn't do his. And I would not suggest on these systems, only to the extent, like, you, if you wanted to get somebody to work on a website, and that, that's the kind of stuff I think you could, you can subcontract out, and that makes sense. But for the integrity of the entire system and stuff, I think you just want one consultant. There are other consultants out there besides Dearborn IT, and that, and I'm, I mean, there, there's, there's a ton of them. When I go to CPA conferences, there must be 25 or 30 that would love to come in here, because they, they find out, they look for anybody that's a manager, a CEO, and they want to make a pitch for it. We've selected Dearborn IT, and we're hoping, and the hope was, when we picked them, that given their expertise and with the City of Dearborn, that, that would be a good fit. But that's always something to, you know, we should always look at with all consultants, so.
Schedule it as soon as you can.
We'll schedule it, and Doug, then when we have your, basically Dearborn's internet connection, everything, our computers will work a lot faster, correct?
You already have good internet connection at this facility, and at, at, the courts just upgraded their, their connectivity. Between facilities, you're, you're still running off the old T1. So we're going to allow the different buildings to connect. DPW, for example, if they run certain Excel programs that they need to run every, every week for payroll and that sort of thing, and their time entry. It's, it's slow at, they're very slow at there, and because they have to talk to this end through that very small pipe. We're going to provide a very large pipe, so it'll be as if they're right here. This, this weekend, we upgraded the, the courts. Working with Comcast, they upgraded there. They were at their point in their lease that, contract that they could get a free upgrade. So they went from a couple of megabytes to speed to 50 megabytes. So they're, they're just amazed at how fast things are happening today. Our first calls this morning were from your courts, and then police as well. Police are limited by the Clemis connection that they've got, so they're on a separate, secured network. So we work with all of that, but throughout your facilities, our goal is to get very fast internet connection and very fast connection between the facilities that use the BSNA and other tools that are available across your network.
Okay, great. I'm finished, thank you.
Well, I mean, a lot of things that you're talking about, you're talking about as far as between different departments and between the two buildings. Personally, I'd like to see a lot more things done for the residents specifically, to be able to communicate with our departments and with, with City Hall. Specifically, like the website, for example, that we've got here, I mean, it's almost like 1970's website. So, a lot more things need to be done to have it a lot more interactive for the residents. The Dearborn one is a pretty good website, I've looked at that, that's a pretty good website. So maybe some, somewhat similar to that. And, and do a little bit more things for the residents specifically, instead of just, you know, for inner office.
Right, and, and we will, we can provide that type of a website using the person that assists us. It's, we can make it almost cookie cutter, so you can give your look and feel to it, use the same sort of tools. The individual that we contract with has a lot of expertise. He does all of the Dearborn Public Schools websites, and supports all of the instructors on their blogs. So we've got a good source there, and I've actually used him to help other cities as well. So we've been in discussion about improving your website. But a website isn't just putting the framework there, it's converting all of the content as well and redesigning it, because you, you don't want to just take your old material and move it in. Every department will be involved with that, reviewing their material, deciding how they want to interact with the public, and what else we want to put out there. So it can be done, certainly.
Sure.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Muscat.
The phone system, you know, I've used the phone system here, and you go through endless prompts to get to wherever you want to go. I mean, if you want to call the police dispatcher, they give you, if you want, if this is emergency, hang up, call anyone, and if you want to speak to this person, you want to speak to that person. Finally, you get to the dispatcher. It would be nice if we had one phone number to the dispatcher. Call dispatch, write to dispatch, instead of having to go through all the prompts.
We, we can help if, if that is something that can be programmed into it. We're a little reluctant to change much of anything on this system, because if anything goes wrong, we can't, we can't call somebody and have them fix it. The new phone system, that's when all of those trees should be mapped and redesigned, if, if you need different extensions, if you needed a different call answering pattern. And, and certainly, Mary Stegner would be an excellent resource for that.
And I apologize, because that's what actually what I meant when we come up with the new system. We could map all of the phones.
Oh, yeah.
Remap everything. Right now, when I receive a phone call from wherever, it comes up City Clerk on my cellphone. Everything is City Clerk, so it's.
And that may be your carrier, your phone system may not be able to identify individual extensions. On ours, we, we have to program that in, but we can do that. And, you know, we're in the process of, we upgraded some of our phones, and we're in the process of better labeling the, the phones that get called out. On the new system, that will definitely be part of what you need to consider.
Thank you. So Mayor and Doug, the additional IT in the website and people accessing the city services through the website, that saves a lot of manpower and saves a lot of money, correct? Yeah, thank you. Mr. Chair, I have one, one more question. Councilman Muscat?
63, I think this is for Mr. Zimmer. We have here four tires, Goodyear Eagle RS Police, and they were charged to water. I'd like to know why that would be charged to water.
It's not actually a police vehicle. It's one of the ordinance cars.
Okay.
It's just an omeclature that the manufacturer uses.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions about current claims? Who originally made the motion?
Seconded by. Seconded by Horvath.
Alright, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item 8A.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Look City Council to ensure and appoint corporate counsel Gary, appoint Gary Miyaki as the corporate counsel for the City of Dearborn Heights.
Second. Second by Councilman Muscat. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that is, Mayor, is that a concurrence, or is that a, we don't appoint them, you appoint them?
I pointed, but you have to, the Charter says that you have to acknowledge, concur in their, and accept them as the, in 8A as incorporation counsel, 8B as city assessor. Even though I had just recently found in the, the previous council approved the city assessor, it does say in the Charter that after the by-election, this has to be confirmed, and that's why it's in front of you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 8B.
Vote on that item.
You just did.
We did not, he made a motion.
Let's vote on it. We didn't vote on it.
We didn't vote.
All those in favor of item 8A, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. The next item on the agenda is item 8B.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move to concur with Mayor Daniel Pulecko in the appointment of Mr. Anthony Fuko as city assessor for the City of Dearborn Heights as outlined in 8B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item 8C for Mayor Pulecko, appointment to the Local Officers Compensation Commission. Chair.
Chairman.
Councilman Muscat?
I move that we concur with Mayor Pulecko in appointing Mr. John Zadikian to the Local Office Compensation Commission as outlined in 8C.
Is there support?
Second.
Supported by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, I know what you're going to say, go ahead.
I'm still looking for more appoint, and I want to thank Councilman Berry, because he was the one that suggested, and Mr. Zadikian was willing to serve. So I'm still looking for additional individuals, and if you have any, please present them to me. to me.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to thank Mr. Zarneki for the time that he has given to this commission, many years of participating in the meetings and I wish to thank him.
And also his work on the library commission.
Right.
Does he still participate, he and his wife?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Two great individuals.
Mr. Chairman.
Nice second there. Mr. Councilman Kozinski?
Might let the cat out of the bag. I think you had him as an instructor, Mr. Mayor.
I certainly did and he, there, there are so many students at the University of Detroit, University of Michigan, Dearborn campus who he helped and assisted. I don't know if you...
I, I had them.
But...
Accounting, accounting, right?
You had them too.
Yeah.
I recently ran into him at Leo's. He is just the greatest man and he's so humble and many of us would never have gotten through the CPA exam, just about anybody. If you could pass this class, you could pass the CPA exam.
Yeah.
So, he's just a, a great individual besides being a great instructor, but thank you.
Brilliant mind.
Yes.
I was wondering if that was the same guy?
Same, same.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item 8D for Mayor Pletko, appointment to the Tifa board.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski?
I move, council concur, the appointment of Mr. Richard Fetter to the Tifa board to replace Mr. Al Mason, all per the dictates of item 8D on the agenda.
Support. Second.
Supported by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item 9A from Recreation Director Dryville, the 2014-2015 Wayne County Millage allotment intergovernmental agreement.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council approve the enclosed 2014-15 IGA agreement between Wayne County and the city in the total amount of $34,402 and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign three original agreements in blue ink in, on the city's behalf. All three signed agreements are to be returned to the Parks and Recreation Department to be forwarded on to the appropriate representative with Wayne County.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item 9B from Fire Chief Brogan, request to purchase generators and equipment.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Move to approve Dearborn Heights Fire Chief Dave Brogan's request to purchase two generators and other equipment under the AFG operations grant, total $9,719. AFG grant will cover $8,747, which leaves $972 as our share, which will come out of capital outlay as outlined in 9B.
Is there support? Seconded by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is from Police Chief Gavin, a request to auction vehicles.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Musket?
I'd like to concur with Chief Gavin and, and his request to auction off the vehicles as listed on 9C.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. That ends the regular portion of our meeting. Are there any announcements? Any announcements?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Thank you. First, I wanted to let our residents know that we will begin constituent office hours the first and third Monday at Berwin Senior Center at 10:00 a.m., the first and third Tuesday at the Eaton Senior Center at 10:00 a.m. And a reminder that the third Monday are the combined office hours with our state representative Julie Pletke, as well as Wayne County Commissioner Diane Webb. And we are at Berwin at 10:00 a.m. and 11:30 at Eaton Senior Center. That's the third Monday of each month. Then I had a question, if I may. Actually, I had spoken with Jack McIntyre earlier about this because there were some questions in the public and he had posted something today that I thought was very good and very informational for our residents regarding coyotes. So, because I know sometimes we see them, we spot them, and I know Jack had shared some information that I thought was really valuable and had asked him to share it this evening. Thank you.
Good evening. Right around the same time last year, we were getting calls about coyote sightings in the north end near Outer Drive and Annaber Trail. And I spoke to the DNR then and also the Department of Agriculture, the Animal Division, and the Michigan Humane Society, who we use as our, Dearborn Heights' animal shelter. And they all basically told me the same thing, that it's not uncommon for coyotes to be in urban areas. Typically, you'll see only maybe one or two. And when you see one or two that have moved away from their pack, so to speak, it's, could be for a number of reasons. It could be a mother that's in search of food for her pups. It could be an aged male that has kind of aged out of the pack system and he's been kind of displaced. There's only been two reported death-related injuries or injury, or death that resulted from coyote attacks. There's only been two reported, both in the United States and Canada. It's very rare to have a coyote approach you. And if you do, there's two, there's two things that they tell you to do. It's called hazing a coyote. You're, you be loud and you be large. So, you, you yell, you yell at the coyote, you put your hands over your head and you make noise. You don't ever kind of walk away from a coyote. If you see a coyote that is in your area, particularly if it comes into your backyard or if it, it has pups with it, then you'd want to call someone right away. You can call the dispatch, let them know what you've seen and then they'll get ahold of the animal control officer that's working at that moment, make sure they get out there right away. So, recently, there's been two, one or two sighted near, and I actually got a call about three weeks ago, a woman was getting up for work early in the morning around 5:00 a.m. and it was walking right past her house in the street. And that was near Edgewood. Right now, they're east of Monroe, down by the creek. They typically follow the creek, they typically don't leave the creek area and go out near homes, but if they kind of run out of space, they may do that on occasion. They go after small, very small animals, mice. They typically go underground and dig up ground insects. They like duck eggs or goose eggs. Those are typically what their diet is. So, it's very rare for a coyote to come near you. Last year, like I said, it was, we saw some near Ford and Outer Drive. The year before that, on Avondale, along the creek there, right at Gully in Avondale, there was a couple pasty ones that were hanging around one particular person's house who backs up right to the creek there, so. All right?
Thank you.
I did post something on our Facebook page. I'm going to ask Bob if he can also put that on our website. If you have any questions, you can call, or if you see one walking by and you want to let us know about it. I do need to let the DNR know about it. And if you can call our, our ordinance department, 791-3497, let us know that you've seen them. All right?
Mr. Chairman.
Jack, thank you. Councilman...
Yeah. I'd just like to get a little bit of an update from Jack. I mean, although the coyotes are obviously a very important issue, but more important than that is, is the rat issue in the South Heights. And one of the residents in the city suggested that instead of waiting for the officers to pass the test, she suggested, you know, maybe hiring a company meanwhile until they pass the test. Because from what I understand, it could be another month, two, three, four, whatever. And even when they do pass the test, there's going to be some time involved until everything gets rolling.
Well...
What's, you know, what can the city, I mean, to me, you know, from the outside looking in, it sounded like a great option and I thought it was a great idea personally. Is that something that we can implement and what would it take to go ahead and do that?
You know, I've had a lot of conversations about this because I, I saw those suggestions on that Facebook page. One of the concerns I have about that is there's two reasons that we have rats. It's, they're, they have food and a place to forage. And if we eliminate the food and the forage, then we'll eliminate the rats. If, it's, what we did with that bait box program that we had made available was after we've exhausted all other efforts. And so, when we go out to a property because we get a call that someone is seeing rats on their property, we go to that house and then we go to seven surrounding houses for a total of eight houses. And we look at everything that's out there. Are people storing things on the ground? Do people have decks that are built right on the ground? We have a lot of those, which creates a place for rats to hide and, and forage under. Are people storing garbage without having a garbage can? Are they just putting bags of garbage outside? You know, we go through all that with the residents. We cover all that material. We do a handout to the surrounding properties around the property that reported seeing the rats. And then, as I was saying, in the past, what we did when we were using those bait boxes is if we exhausted all those efforts and it seemed like people were cleaning things up and we're getting results that way, we did aid by providing the, the bait boxes and it did help. But it's not, it's definitely not the cure-all to how we get rid of rats. We have to eliminate the food source. Many people don't know that about 90% of a rat's diet is other animal waste. And I, it's surprising to me when I talk to people, how many people have dogs and they have a schedule of once a week where they pick up after their dogs in the backyard? Well, that's six days that you provided a smorgasbord for rats to go in your backyard and eat. They're going to keep coming back there. So, the best suggestion is get everything off the ground, no outdoor storage, make sure that if you have a dog, you're letting him use the restroom outside, follow him out there right then and there, pick it up. That way, you don't have to spend the next three days trying to find those piles all over the backyard. You can get it all taken care of. But I, I think we're doing a good job on that. We're going after, we've, we've been able to identify particular areas, not just in the south end, but also in the north end where there's been an increase. But if we don't get rid of the food source and if we don't get rid of the blight, we could put a million bait boxes out there. It's not going to cure the problem.
I mean, two suggestions. I mean, obviously, not everybody's going to be watching this show or this council meeting every single time. So, I mean, just one suggestion to the areas where there is a problem, maybe doing some sort of a mail-out based on the things that you're suggesting there. You know, I'm sure a lot of, hey, I can tell you myself personally, I didn't know that that's what they come for. Unfortunately, I don't have that problem. But obviously, I sympathize with a lot of residents that have that problem and we've got to do something to be able to get rid of them. And again, I'll, I'll repeat again, I, I know you tried to answer it, but hiring a company, I think, would be personally a great idea.
The problem with a company, Councilman, is that when would it stop? When would they give us a start time and a finish time? They're in the business of making money and they're going to continue to come out. And I've talked to a lot of residents who have hired...
Do they do it on a monthly basis?
No, but I've talked to a lot of residents who have gone ahead and hired their own private companies and it just goes on and on. We, what was nice about when we were using the bait boxes, and if I could just give you an update, it's a tricky test. We never expected this test was going to be as difficult as it was. There's a lot of questions, they want us to cover a lot of material. The most recent officers that took the test, they only missed passing by one point. So, we're, in about two weeks, we're going to all retake it again and I think we'll have favorable results. I don't think it's going to take that long for us to catch up because we identified already where all the areas are and we'll go right in there and we'll, we'll address that, so...
One last question. When you do pass the test, what about in terms of experience, you know, as far as getting rid of rats? I mean, is passing the test enough or is there more to it than just that?
In terms of what we learned from taking the test?
In other words, what I'm saying is you passed the test and that's great. But what about the experience as far as being able to get rid of rats? I mean, how do you...
Well, most of the people that are taking the test with us are, they do work for extermination companies, so we're all taking the same test.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jack, thank you. Any other announcements?
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
I had the opportunity today to address the Greater Dearborn, Dearborn Heights Chamber of Commerce. I appreciated that four council members that come up for the presentation, Mayor Jack O'Reilly and myself for the guest speakers. Just highlight a couple of things that I mentioned at, at the dinner that is kind of an emphasis. But one, and this would hopefully reduce food availability for the rats and other varmints in the area, is that we'll be bidding out a new waste garbage collection contract. I had Mr. Miyaki research it because I would have liked to have done it before. He told us that we cannot break the contract and we're stuck till October. We'll bid it out before October, but we will include containers and hopefully that will help the situation, at least other communities have told me that that's of great assistance. In addition, we'll be presenting to the council a five-year plan that's been developed by all the department heads and myself. And the third item that I wanted to mention is that we'll be setting up a task force first internally and then we'll be having some residents that are interested in participating. And it's basically to look at some of our boundary areas in which, when you leave Dearborn Heights and I don't want to pick on a neighboring community, but you see a situation of blight. It's not like, a lot of us will go from Dearborn to Dearborn Heights and you couldn't tell where the boundary stopped and where it started because the communities, we have, we have a good neighbor in regards to keeping up their property. So, we'll be putting that task force together. We went through and changed our city planners and so we'll be bringing them in. Any council members that are willing to serve on that, we'll give you all advance notice of that. And we'll be putting together those departments and just setting up a task force and look at what we can do from a police standpoint, ordinance standpoint. And also, the other item, Councilman, to somewhat address, is we've talked about an informational campaign. More than once, we have mailed in information and there's been some thought about doing that again and highlighting those particular concerns. So, those are a couple of things. I think there was one more thing I mentioned today, but I've forgotten. But we will be showing, that presentation will be on our cable, the dinner that many of you were at. So, give you an opportunity to see some of the questions and hopefully, but I was very proud, I had four council members, Mr. Mayor O'Reilly had none, so.
And Mayor, I'd like our council to have, you know, different subcommittees or every council person involved in different things, like we did for the charter revisions.
Yeah.
Any other announcements?
Well, I too attended the mayor's State of the City address and listened with interest to some of the discussions afterwards about the challenges the city faces regarding funding. The one thing that was said today and is really true, that change is constant and, and the city is, is forced to move forward in the environment we have. I'm, I'm humbled by being elected as council chair and I think everybody knows I'll work hard, I'll be here, have 100% attendance and I look forward to us moving forward. Any other announcements?
Mike?
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to talk about a couple of upcoming events. This Wednesday, January 13th, at 7:00 p.m. at Carolyn County Library, we will be having a program on the history of Metro Airport. Join Daniel Mason as he covers how Detroit Metro grew from one square mile to, to the huge air center that it is today. Registration requested, call 313-791-3800. Also, next Tuesday, January 19th, at 7:00 p.m. at Carolyn County Library, we will be talking about animals in the Civil War. Learn about traveler, Robert E. Lee's horse, Old Abe, the Eagle mascot of the Wisconsin Eighth Infantry, and many other animals who served alongside troops on all fronts. Now, finally, I want to talk about a new service. Starting Monday, February 1st, mobile hotspots will be available at both libraries. I think we might be the first in the state or close to the first in the state in terms of a library doing this. These hotspots will provide wireless access on the go, wherever you need it. It will be available for Dearborn Heights residents, years 18 or over, with loan periods for one week. No reservations, sorry. They will be first come, first served to check out. Operation is as simple, you just turn them on and you connect your electronic devices. So, that's going to be coming up soon. So, that's all for now.
Mike?
Yeah.
Mike, and do those, those don't leave the library or they can't? Mike, and do those those don't leave the library or they can't leave the library?
Yes, they do. We've taken into account the cost of the device. We can turn them off remotely. If someone fails to pass and doesn't return it, at that point, becomes a piece of plastic that doesn't really accomplish any purpose.
Oh, great.
All right. That's all for now. Thank you for your time and see you at the library.
Mike, thank you. State Representative Julie Pawecki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. First of all, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
This is an interesting start to the new year. I trust things will go smoothly the rest of the the year at your council meetings. I just wanted to inform you about a couple bills that have passed, which have gotten a lot of press, so you may have already heard about them. The first one was SB 13, which eliminates the straight party ticket voting, which will be a big concern for Mr. Pershevitz to have to deal with. It was tie-barred originally to a bill that would have allowed no reason absentee voting. And so more people could have voted in advance, and so there would be less people at the polling places. But unfortunately, that was removed, and so just the straight party ticket voting has been eliminated, which could cause there to be long lines. So clearly, I am not happy about that because there will be people that will just get tired of waiting and they will leave. And we're supposed to be making it easier and more accessible for people to vote, and that's certainly not the way to go. So there have been talks of lawsuits because it could be voter suppression. So we'll see what happens with that. The second one that has also gotten a lot of press is SB 571. And that was a very simple, 12-page, straightforward bill that had bipartisan support. And at the last minute, it was about 8:00 o'clock at night on the House floor, they added 42 pages to that. So now it's a, if I did my math right, it's a 53-page bill. We had 10 minutes to look at it. Most of us on our side of the floor never even saw what was in there. They added many new bills. People on the other side have said, in retrospect, that they didn't even know what was in the bill. But the thing that's most concerning for you is that 60 days prior to any election, that anything that has to do with a millage for a school, a municipality, a library, you are not allowed to educate the people. You're not allowed to send out any printed material or they're saying that you can't even discuss it. If somebody calls you and wants to know about it, you can't even discuss it with them. That one has many lawsuits that are probably going to happen because particularly for the libraries, the only way that they can reach people is if they send out a bulletin that has information in there about the upcoming millage, if they're trying to pass a millage or a bond. And they wouldn't be able to do that. So we and the sad thing is, it went to the governor's office, and he signed it, and he said, now this needs to go back to the legislature and they need to fix this. Well, in my world, that's backwards. You make it right the first time, and then you sign it. So we will see what will happen with these two bills. There has been a lot of anger from school districts because they need to be able to let their community know when a millage should be passed. And for obvious reasons, they're getting less money than they should be to begin with. So sad situation. I'm hoping 2016 will be a better year, and that we'll pass some bills that are helping the public, not harming the public. So I'll take any questions if you have any.
That bill doesn't, I apologize, that bill doesn't make sense. What is the intent of that? And was it brought on by which side? You say the Republican side?
Yes.
Well, I think the idea is, you know, sort of an anti-tax that so if a school district wants to pass a millage, the school district has certain rigid requirements to pass that millage, but it doesn't stop a citizens group or somebody from that. That would be unconstitutional.
Doesn't doesn't prohibit a citizens group from campaigning against it or?
No, any citizen. And right now, there is a bill or there's a law, I'm sorry, that says that you cannot spend taxpayer money on educating people to pass a millage or to pass a bond issue. But they said that there were four incidents in the last several years where schools have actually done that. They've reached out to people and they have said, possibly using taxpayer money, that we would like you to vote for this and here are the reasons why. So you cannot do that. This is actually, no one is fussing up to who wrote these bills or who instigated the bills, but we're being told that it is probably coming from the west side of the state, and I'm sure you can guess who that is, and some of the charter groups that don't want millages passed in the public schools. So, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. I was just going to add, you know, really, what worries me about this is with most of your millage language, of course, you know, has to be approved.
Yes.
And we don't see it back, the final approved language, to typically 45 days. So now you're talking about a 60-day restriction.
Right.
So there goes the opportunity to answer your residents' questions that they have about a millage or a ballot question.
Sure.
And so that's really a disservice to our residents.
I agree. And typically, the typical voter doesn't even start to think about what's on the ballot till maybe a couple of weeks before, when you know, oh, I'm going to go to the ballot or go to the the poll, and I have to know what's on the ballot and I need to be educated on what I'm voting for. Where are they going to get this information from?
Mr. Chair? Councilman Musket?
I too was at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, and Dearborn's mayor gave us a good civic lesson. And and Mr. Mayor, you can correct me if I'm if I'm saying this wrong. Weren't you supposed to have one day layover with this bill instead of passing it?
There were, first of all, there were several things put into this bill. Now, one of them went to committee. It was voted out unanimously in committee. But everything else that was added into this bill never saw committee, never got a hearing, never had stakeholders or people that were opposers or supporting of it that would come and would speak on it or speak against it. And there was no analysis done. There was no House fiscal, no Senate fiscal analysis, so we would know how was it going to affect the the public and and what ramifications are there for these bills?
Isn't that illegal?
Well, in my book, yes.
Well, yeah, with the committee process, the nice thing about the committee process is you hear all the stakeholders' testimony, and then you can fine-tune the bill.
Correct. And you amend it, absolutely, yes, or substitute it, right. So, yes, this is this is not even playing by the rules, and and I took an oath to play by the rules, and so all of us are very upset about it, on both sides, actually, because they didn't get the committee hearing as well to learn about what was in that bill. So and there are other things in that bill as well, but I mean, for for you, that's the one that will most directly affect you, so.
Representative Pawecki?
Yes.
Roads and fireworks, any any idea when we're going to actually see the the rubber hit the road and the money flowing through and the?
The increase in the gas tax and the increase in the vehicle registration doesn't even start till 2017. So you won't see that money for a while. So, no. And what was the other one, fireworks?
Fireworks.
Representative Yanez from Sterling Heights, and I think we talked about this, has a bill that he's trying to get a committee hearing for but hasn't had any luck. He is trying to return the fireworks situation back to prior to 2011.
He's a former fire chief, correct?
He's a former fire chief, yes. So if anybody would know, he would know. So he is working on that. Who's the other one? Representative Howrillak from Troy has a bill on that as well, but not quite as stringent as the one that Representative Yanez has introduced.
Great. Anything else? Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Any other announcements?
All right. If any residents have any concerns they want to address the council? Marge, do you want to keep time or?
No.
Mary, go ahead.
Well, my Mary Saputo, Oakland Drive, my questions are going to be short anyway. First of all, to the IT person, we haven't gotten any crime alerts from Mark Paronello since last May, and it's because the system the police department uses recognizes his distribution list as spam because he has so many names on the list. Is that ever going to get fixed?
Mr. Chairman, may I answer that? Because I talked to Corporal Paronello today about this. Actually, he called me in the morning.
And we had discussed it.
We discussed this, and because of that whole IT problem and sending out emails that he's unable to do, he is going to be using the Ping for Alert, and that's going to be starting immediately where he'll be able to utilize that and send out his crime alerts. And the most recent one will be that IRS scam where you're getting called and they're being very aggressive with people. And so he's going to start using the Ping for Alert as the first step.
What if you don't use Ping for Alert, you're like out in the cold, right?
Well, he has Ping for Alert and also if he posts notifications at the senior centers because that particular population may not use smartphones.
I I just don't understand the problem in fixing it. I I really don't understand it.
Part of it is, as I understand it, you know, your internet providers and your email system only allows you to send out so much data via email, and he's his capacity has exceeded that.
Well, I understand that, but if you break the distribution list up into different distribution lists and then send it out separately, he'd only have to do that like once a month. So I don't understand the problem.
Well, and yeah, I think those questions are are best answered by Corporal Paronello, but that's what he's working on, is I understand it. Doug, do you have anything to add or? Doug?
I'm sorry.
Do you have anything to add or any?
I don't. The last last time they spoke to me about this was probably-
A while ago.
Yeah, six months, a year ago. I I thought they had a solution.
We're working on something. Mark's got to do a little bit more work. He's busy. He can't interrupt the emails into another system, so we're looking at some of that.
And and the Ping alerts are free. You just get set up for that. And it it takes a little doing, or at least it took me a little doing, but it's a it's an effective system also.
Okay. And then the other thing I want to bring up was that I sent this to Jack quite some time ago. Detroit has an app where people, their residents, can download it to their phones, and it's free. And they can go around and take pictures of blight throughout the city, wherever they see it, and it downloads directly to the city. And I sent it to Jack, and I think Jack forwarded it to Christina, and I haven't heard anything about it since then. I mean, you're talking about a task force, but here's an app that Detroit already has.
This is for streetlights that are out?
It's for blight.
No, for blight in general.
Oh, for blight. Oh, okay. I misunderstood.
But, you know, I mean, if they see streetlights out and stuff like that, then they just take a picture of it, it downloads and goes directly to the city. So are we still looking at that? I know that they approached Mr. Miatki, I believe, and he said he didn't have any problem with it.
They haven't, I I haven't had any contact with regards to that system. That's a system that a number of cities are using. There is a cost with it. It's not a free system. So you you have to determine whether or not you can afford that that system and how you want to use it because it's not just the front-end piece. There's a back-end database piece that that you have to pay for. So you have to look at, the city of Dearborn has not adopted one yet because the the costs look kind of steep to begin with. We are looking at it, and we certainly could assist the Heights in reviewing packages as well.
Well, it seems like something that would be great because Jack can tell you, I'm all over the city and I'm always turning in ordinance complaints. So if I could just take a picture with my phone and it goes straight to the city, that would eliminate all the steps that, you know, of me writing down all the information and then going home and entering in the computer.
Yeah, because I think now, if you take a you have a digital image, you can email it or or somehow get it to the ordinance department and/or the building department.
Yeah, well.
We'll be we're going to have a session with IT and we'll be discussing that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, to be honest with you guys, I've been living on Hanover for quite a bit, four to five years. Every time it's snowing, I'm going to the same problem. I think four years should have thought deep into about a way to plow snow through this area. I'm fed up. I am completely fed up. I called TBW again today. Up till now, I can't even get in or out of my park to my driveway. There's a big chance I'm going to get into my neighbor's house, just a piece of ice. Till when? Do I belong to this city? Why am I a part of Dearborn Heights if I'm not getting served? Coyotes problem? I do come from Lebanon, which we have billions of coyotes. If you're telling me DNR are telling you, act loud, put your hands up, that doesn't exist. Coyotes were in my backyard. Coyotes were in my in my backyard. If DNR told you they have killed three people, then we have the chance to have the third one in Dearborn Heights. In my block, most of our resident are senior. We're not going to take the chance and at the end blame it onto these people, whether the officer, cops, whether the fire department or whatever. DNR are having the problem. Let them come out here and solve it. It's not our problem.
Hussein?
We don't have to live out here and be afraid. We have almost about 10 to 12 senior people in that block. Let's get it secured.
Let's let's talk about the snow situation because I I live very near where you live, and I haven't seen any coyotes. But let's talk about the snow situation. He's at the end of the block.
I know exactly where he is, and this is the first I've heard of it. I'll have to look at it.
It's often a problem. Last year, we had almost three or four conversations about it. And last year, we're you guys were on the press three, four times. And I don't know if you do remember Mr. Tom. Last year, I had to send in the press, the American News, and that we were on the press because of that issue as well. It's not the first time. It's been a million times, several times, and I'm fed up. I belong to this city. I do have the right to get served from the city.
We'll look into it. People who live over on Dearborn Dale, for example, near you, which is a circle, they have the same problem. When the snowplows go through, if they go through quickly, somebody doesn't end up with a big lump of snow right in their driveway.
And any answer back about our houses, what's happening to these houses or still waiting?
The the mayor, do you want to update him on the the situation with the?
We're hoping to hear by the end of the month. I think it's the and and as soon as we find out, we'll be out contacting all those residences. So we hope by the end of the month, January this month.
All right. Thank you.
Patrick Willis, 23440, Hanover. There has been three different, four different residents, now that I know of Sam, that have sighted the coyotes on the Ecorus Creek with a conversation that I had with Dan two days ago. The den is behind the house. The address is 23480. There's brush on the creek that has been-
23480?
Two, um, 23480, Hanover.
Hanover.
And it's across the creek from that house. Saturday afternoon, 23460 sighted them at 3:00 in their backyard, two doors down from me. In the conversation with Dan, and actually, that house that was in the backyard, they called Dearborn Heights. Obviously, animal control is closed. They called the dispatcher. They were told, call Monday. So the thing of as soon as you see them, call somebody. That doesn't work. So they did call the DNR. The DNR said, you may want to hire a trapper. That's unacceptable if they're there for food, small animals. There's ducks there, we all know that. There's like 50 ducks there. There's small animals, there's rabbits, there's cats. There is two small dogs in my backyard. I don't want to lose them because I'm waiting to scare these things. I don't go out with the dog 11:00 at night and scan the backyard. If they're there for food or something else, I'm hoping that someone's going to put a trap out and relocate them. My question to Dan was, if I do find them in the backyard, and nobody can tell me that they're safe, nobody, they're a wild animal. Back in the old days, they shot them.
Any of those houses on either side of the creek vacant? Because I know a lot of times there's a problem if a house is vacant.
I can't tell you about the other side of the creek, but there's enough brush on that creek for them to hide. Apparently, this house that sighted him in his backyard knows where the den is, saw them cross the creek and go into it. I'm sure they'd be happy to point it out to somebody. But again, my question to Dan was, and he couldn't answer it, if I'm approached in my backyard, am I allowed to discharge a firearm in the city limits if I feel threatened? Because I was told, and city council can answer this, if you have a a dog run up to you that you feel threatened by, and you have a CCW that you can that you can shoot it. So I'm asking for both of those to be finelined. So I'm asking for both of those to be fine lined. I don't want to wait. I don't think anybody wants to wait to find out the coyotes are going to run away. They're there. There's two of them. They're, they're adult size. If they are male and female, here we go. We're going to have a family there. They have a great food source and it's not dog waste. It's all those ducks. You can walk out there at any point in time across that creek. They've been fed so much over the years that their attention, they come flying in. So.
Jack, you, you can check into it and any of those residents should call ordinance and.
I'll check it out tomorrow.
I'll give you the gentleman's phone number after if you'd like.
Great.
Okay. Second thing I'd like to know with, with you being new now, in your, in, in last year, we came up, the residents and the people that stand up ask a lot of questions that never got answered. Can this be put on the next meeting's agenda when you say, look, we'll get back to you. We don't know. Can we relook at it? Can you guys come back to us instead of us coming back and saying, what are you going to do? What are you going to do? What are you going to do?
Well, what we can discuss is different methods, like a, like a ticket system or something when there's an issue. So, you know, you don't have to come up, but realize that it's, it's a big city. There are a lot of issues and as you know, I live not too far from where you live and this is the first I've heard about coyotes and realize that coyote is a wild animal. So if, if they're there, it's not, you know, if, if there's food source there that shouldn't be, that's the city's problem, but just, you know, wild animals.
You can't control the ducks.
Is not in, in and of itself, something that the city is responsible for.
Okay. I understand that part.
I think your, your question, if I may interrupt, Mr. Chair, thank you. I think your question is if there are issues that the residents bring up, is there a way we can register those complaints and have an answer for them to get back rather than to have them come up like the gentleman in the back does all the time, asking the same question and never getting another response? Can we put a ticket system together that registers that complaint and once it's addressed, we can get back with the resident and then we can share that, that answer here? There have been many a questions that these people have that we do not get back with them on. Not that we're neglecting our responsibilities, just that there's no system in place to address it. And now as the chair position, maybe you can do that.
Yeah, and we as a council need to vote how we want to do it. Do we want to do a ticket system? Do we want to do what we've been doing all along with the department heads checking into it? But, you know, there are a lot of issues. It's a public forum. So we'll, we'll be discussing that. But one system that, that I know of is the, the ticket system.
Okay. So do I wait till the next meeting to find out if I'm allowed to discharge a firearm within the city limits to protect myself?
Because that's, that's.
I think we can get an answer right now.
He can get an answer.
Chief, prosecutor can say that, but you know, at any time a firearm is discharged in the city.
It can go before prosecutor. So if you shot an animal, you shot coyote, the report is written, it goes down to the Wayne County prosecutors. They determine, you know, if it's justifiable or not. We can't determine that. You know, that, that goes to the prosecutor's office and they determine if, if you shoot an animal, just as if you shoot a person, you know, if someone shoots somebody, it all goes before the prosecutor and they work it out and determine if it's justifiable or not. So you have a right to defend yourself. You have to present that, you know, only you can do that. So it's, it's a judgment call. If you feel your life is in jeopardy, you can protect your life, but it's going to be reviewed by the prosecutors. If they don't think something's right, then you get charged. So it, it's hard, you know, judgment. It's a self-defense issue and you got to feel yourself that you were just, that you were justified and that your life was in jeopardy.
Well, I can, I hope I can scare one away, like large and in charge type thing, but if we do need to call you guys, we get the dispatcher like Ray said, and the dispatcher says there's nobody around, by that time, you hope that the coyote is gone or that something hasn't happened?
I will check with dispatch. Usually we respond when there's injured dogs or vicious dogs after hours. Police Department responds.
Okay. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I'm sorry, Corporal Attorney Gary Miyaki needed the floor.
Yeah, if, if I may, in terms of, this has been very rarely come up and it's come up in the context of vicious dogs in the past. In general, recognize that hunting in the city is absolutely prohibited. So I had this issue come up a number of years ago where a gentleman ended up shooting a couple pit bulls that were attacking his children or he believed were an imminent threat to them. Ticket was issued and I ended up dismissing the ticket based on the idea that it was justifiable. But in general, the default position is it will be looked at as an offense unless it's justifiable and to be justifiable, there has to be an imminent threat to you or to another individual.
Again, with a coyote, you get a 50/50 chance, right? Nobody can call.
You're not in a position where you can hunt the coyotes.
I'm not asking to hunt it.
That's what the question is.
If I walk out in my backyard and it's gnawing on my dog or, I mean, my, my wife says, can I call you at work if I see one? Because they're, they're out during the day too. And I'm like, yeah, but by the time I get home, I can't do anything.
If it's a threat to your, to your, another person, to yourself, and an imminent threat, in other words, you are not going to be, you know, if you go out there and say, well, I thought they were, but they were across the creek and I ended up taking a shot, that, that's not an imminent threat. So the default position is to rely on law enforcement and our enforcement mechanisms because if you make the wrong call, you may end up being issued with a ticket or prosecuted. But if you are imminently being threatened or some other human is being imminently threatened or an animal of yours is being imminently threatened, then you would potentially be able to use reasonable force. And whether or not that ends up coming to be a firearm is also a different question. So for example, if you had something that you could do under the circumstances that would not involve a firearm, you may find yourself in a difficult position. So, yeah, I, I hate to give you that kind of an answer, but that's why the, you should be relying on law enforcement as the first line. They will be able to make better judgments with regard to the use of force and/or deadly force under.
Well, I hope when bringing it to you guys, that something happens and nothing happens to anybody. So, I mean, I don't want to throw a T-bone steak the other way so they run. I'm not going to get close with a baseball bat, but like you said, it's a 50/50 thing of what's going to happen.
Well, it's, it's a difficult thing because you could also end up using deadly force, like in the situation that we were looking at, it was a discharge of a firearm is what the gentleman was charged with. But then I was able to verify the information and I decided that at that point I was going to dismiss the case because what he said was indeed accurate. And then I ended up getting a lot of grief from another city resident who basically had both of his dogs killed by this other resident, but I was like, your dogs weren't supposed to have large menacing, menacing people. So these are very difficult things to give you a broad type of direction on how we would end up reacting under it. So your best mean is, means is to deal with law enforcement, our law enforcement, and only in the case of the most imminent threat should you be considering using force, particularly and especially deadly force. And under no circumstances should anything be amounting to hunting. And I wish I could give you a better, a better direction, but unfortunately that's the best I can do.
Since you brought up dogs, one other question. Are pit bulls legal in Dearborn Heights?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just say something real quick?
Jack, go ahead.
I just, I want to bring up this point again. Today on our Facebook page, I posted an article from the Michigan Humane Society and two links to YouTube videos that talk a lot, will answer a lot of these questions that people have regarding the coyotes. You're probably seeing them hanging around because they maybe did recently have some pups. They're not going to stay, that's not going to be their permanent home. They typically are nomadic where they're constantly moving. So as soon as the pups are of age that they can travel with them, they'll take them and they'll continue. They always follow the path of a near water and they may settle temporarily. But I, I encourage people to go to our Facebook page. If you're not on Facebook, tomorrow, I'll make sure Bob has the information that he can post on our website. And I think the two links to these two YouTube videos and the article that I presented, I think it'll ease a lot of people's minds and it'll answer a lot of questions regarding the behavior of coyotes. We've lived around them for years and many communities outside of our area, even where my cousins live out near Wixom, they see coyotes all day long. So, but I, I mean, I, I'm encouraging people to look at that article and if you have access to YouTube, go to the YouTube videos. It's helpful.
You, you had mentioned that if we see a sighting, you would call DNR. What's DNR's plan other than telling?
That's really a question for the DNR, but Councilman Berry has a comment?
I just wanted to ask you, when you, when you told me you find them in your backyard, I've been dealing with them up and down the Rouge River on Ann Arbor Trail since I've lived there for the last 18 years. Do they stand their ground with you?
It wasn't me. It was, it was the, the guy who saw them Saturday afternoon was in his backyard. They, he, the, he actually hopped the fence back to the creek, crossed the creek, and that's when he was able to identify the, the den, if you want to call.
He crossed the creek.
Yes. There was, and, and the second one was over there.
Yeah. Because I was going to say, like Jack said, because for the most part, they're giving birth now and once they've had those pups, they'll move on, but they'll follow that river up and down. And it's an epidemic across the country right now. National Geographic just did a special on them. Chicago's inundated with, with coyotes, believe it or not. And there's, it's going to be very difficult to move them out. They've come into the suburbs and that to feed off of our trash and, and whatever we have in the backyard. So, yeah, it is, it's a good problem.
Yeah, but the only, it was Jack who mentioned it. That's why I asked if you saw them, contact, he contacted DNR.
Yeah, if I could just clarify, if I can clarify that, if you, if, if it continues to stay in your yard or if you see that it appears sick or injured in some way, then I would say that's more of a situation where we need to come out and look. If it's just traveling through your backyard or hanging out there for a few minutes, more than likely, once you go outside and say, get out in a loud voice, it's going to get out. It's going to move on.
We're just at a waiting game until they move on. We can't do anything else.
I'm sorry, what?
I said, we're just at a waiting game for them to move on themselves.
Yes.
There's no trapping, relocation.
The one at, the one at Ann Arbor Trail, not our drive, was there for about four or five.
That's Heinz Park.
Four or five days. And then the one that was behind Avondale, I would say about 10 days. And then the mom that was living there, she took extra precautions during that time. When the kids went out, she went out with the kids. She did have a small dog. She made sure the dog was on the leash and she kept the dog with her. But in about 10 days, the coyotes were gone from her property.
We'll hope for the best.
Mr. Chairman. I was going to say to.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Willis, I will email you the information that Jack posted, just for your information on the YouTube videos. I'll do that tomorrow morning.
Please state your name and your street.
Hello, I'm Jaclyn Turner from McDonald Street. Two things. One is regarding the snow that neighbors blow on our houses to where it blocks our dryer vents and our gas meters. It cannot be read because it's piled up there. This morning, for the fourth year in a row, I've had trouble with, this is a company, that it's my understanding that when they come here to do business, they're supposed to be licensed. They don't have any names on their truck. They work under subcontract for a wellness center because the house next door to me is a group home. Now, I have on two occasions had to have my house repaired because once they ran into it with a lawnmower and broke the cement. And the other time was again, when they blew the snow and my dryer would not dry my clothes and I couldn't figure out what's wrong with my dryer. So I had somebody come and look and they said, the problem is it's blocked by the snow out there. So it was continually running, but it will not dry your clothes and then it starts to leak down into the, the vent.
So it was the, it was the contractor for the group home, not the city?
No, not the city. No.
So go ahead.
Okay. I have called the police. They say it's the ordinance department. I called the ordinance people. They say, no, we're not coming out. We can't get out there in time to see them. We don't know whether they got a license or not, so nobody wants to do anything about that. Why make ordinances? Because there is an ordinance that says you're not supposed to blow the snow on other people's property. But here, they're clearly, the reason I called the police, this now damages my property. So that to me is vandalism, since I have spoke to them several times and said, do not do this. To keep them from putting there, I have a little garden fence thing that I put up. In December, it was still warm enough, so they drive their lawnmower across my front yard to get around the car. Instead of getting out and asking the people to move it, again, they hit the cement on my basement window. I don't appreciate them damaging my property. So I got another little garden fence and put out there. So today, when they're coming with their snow blower, it hits my bedroom window, the two basements window and my dryer vent. I went out there, I said, remove it. I said, first of all, I want to see your license for the City of Dearborn Heights. Oh, we don't have one. We don't have to have one. Now, I want to know, do they or do they not supposed to have business license to work in the city?
Well, yeah, get the name of the company and Jack.
They don't have anything on their truck and the people won't give me, nope, they don't have nothing. I asked for it.
Mr. Chairman, the license plate numbers.
I do have their license plate. I've actually turned it in before from their truck. Another thing is that the Humane Society has saw fit to be releasing cats that they have fixed. They cut off the tip of their left ear. A lot of residents do not know this. We want to know, are they given rabies shots? Are they only given the one for the year? Why are they being released back into the neighborhoods? How many are going to be released? Some people think this is good because it helps to control the rats and the mice. Other people don't want them around because they are a distraction. They cause property. They get in their flower beds, different things like that. Also the safety of the cats. Some of them being released here in the winter. That is not appropriate. They look for their housing in September. They should only be being released, if they're going to continue to be released, from April to October so that they definitely have a way to get a winter house set up.
That's a question for the Humane Society. I understand.
Well.
People releasing the cats, it's, it's.
Well, the thing is that they said they got permission to return two cats to South Heights over on the other side of Beach Daily from our ordinance department, a lady named Darcy. That's what they said.
It doesn't sound right to me. They, they wouldn't, they wouldn't get, get a cat and then just, you're talking about release it not to a person, but just in the neighborhood?
Yes, sir, they did. I've got one.
That's not even right.
A lot of communities are doing it with their local shelters. It's called trap neuter return. And what they do is they, if it's a cat that's, well, there's a couple of things that you can do. If you are a person that has several outdoor cats and you're providing for them, you can take the cats in, they will vaccinate them with a lifetime vaccination and a lifetime rabies vaccination. They'll clip their ears so that if they ever get caught in the future, they know that they've already been vaccinated and they will return them. It's an alternative to euthanizing every cat that comes into the shelter. Cats do not do well when they go into shelters. They do, they're okay for about two days and then almost 90% of cats end up getting an upper respiratory infection and then they become not adoptable, difficult for the shelters to manage. So it's something that we've had meetings with the Humane Society about. Jaclyn had already mentioned this to me. I put a call into the person that I deal with at the shelter, gave her the specific dates. I just haven't heard back from her yet because my understanding is that it wouldn't happen I just haven't heard back from her yet, because my understanding is that it wouldn't happen during the winter months, but Jaclyn assured me that it was that Michigan Humane-
But this is something that the Humane Society does, it's their program.
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
But again, the city should be aware of how many they're going to be putting back out there. You know, because that becomes the city's problem then. If people don't want them around, there are people that throw water on them, they kick them, they throw things at them, they're, they don't want cats. They don't like them, they're scared of them, different things like that. So yes, that becomes a city problem then. So he definitely needs to find out from them. And like I said, that was even the humane thing several years ago. They wouldn't even give you a catch cage for them after October, because the weather was getting too cold, and they said, "The nights get too cold for them to be in there all night." So now, apparently, that's changed, because now they're, they're releasing them even in the month of December.
Thank you.
You know, thank you.
Counselor Bob Hades?
Why miss talking in here? I'm almost wondering, with all the killings across the country this year, whether they should have said they were a coyote, and they might have got more protection. But be that as it may, I'd like to congratulate the three people that got elected, won, reelected, and so forth. And I think you've got, honestly, a decent body, at least the incoming three people. I think they can provide some extra energy. Ray Musket, of course, is, you moved from being out here to being on that council. Now, you're going to get an opportunity to delve into some of these issues, and hopefully with the new council chair, who has some legislative experience, both at the city council and in Lansing, to really make an impact. Now, I know you're surrounded by Tom Berry on your left, and Dave Abdullah, the new council various, and really a very astute young man, too. And Dave Abdullah certainly doesn't need the money that we pay, we're going to pay him here, okay? He'll get along without that. But honestly, I look for him to be instrumental, as long as, as well as everybody else on this council, especially Ray. Lisa Hicks Clayton, I know when you first came in, you were getting your sea legs, and I might have looked the other way a couple of times when you said something, and I admit that, but you've come a long way in my eyes in terms of looking at the issues a little closer, and honestly, putting some serious input in the future to this city. I know Marge Horvath, she's put her heart into this city. I may not have always agreed with Marge Horvath, right or wrong, but the respect that you have to give all the people, as long as they come up here and they think they're doing the best job they can, that's fine and dandy, and you can't ask for anything more than that. But I think we have challenges in this city. I've heard it mentioned in the past that sometimes the schools aren't our issue. Well, the schools, I believe, are our issue in this city. That's what, especially Dave Abdullah can impact a little bit on that and speak to that issue, because you have a new school going up right now. It's going to be K through 12. I thought it was going to be something small, and this thing is growing and growing. Our charter schools continue to attract more of our students and so forth. And if they're not, if they're not happy with what's going on in our public schools, and I know our public schools are, I guess they're making an effort. I've heard we've gotten some national awards, but when I looked a little closer, it seems like there's a select group of second, third, fourth graders that were in the 99 percentile in terms of test results. Our high school is about in the 35th percentile across the straight, across the state, when I looked at that. Dearborn High was like 40 some percent. Divine Child, of course, does a nice job, and they continue to attract people from all over, Dearborn Heights included, and Divine Child does a nice job. Of course, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the standard and the curriculum get a little higher at Crestwood, rather than we be concerned about whether we're going to pass a millage, whether we're going to have a halal chicken patty at a middle school. They've made issues of things that I don't think are really that important. We really should be gearing towards the future and getting our kids involved, whether they get mentored in job situations, because a four-year degree may not get them a whole lot today. They may have to have something postgraduate and so forth, but I don't want to see just the top 5% or 10% of the kids doing well in a school.
But we, you're going to, you're doing well, but you're going to also address that to the school board, because we have nothing to do with-
Well, I am, but we-
But the issue of traffic around the new school on Beach Daily is going to be an issue.
And that's where I'm going to have an issue with the chair, because I think the school is an issue in this city, because they extract tax dollars from us, too. They're going to be asking for a millage, and those millage dollars compete with the dollars that you guys are going to ask us for. And I hope when you guys are looking at contracts for this city, that they're efficient, that they serve the best interest of the people in this city. And we find a more efficient way, and it's great to see people come up here and address issues that are important to them. But if I'm correct, Mr. Clerk, I believe 15.9% of the eligible voters voted this last election? That's a shame. So I don't know what it's going to take for our council and everyone to encourage people to get out there and vote, and really become focused and interested in the city. It's great to see all the new businesses, and it's a credit to the building department, I think, that we're seeing a lot of new businesses and so forth. And it's probably some input, and I'm sure when they redid the master plan, but I hope everything's been carefully thought out so that we're able, so our infrastructure will support a lot of this, and that we don't have failing businesses and so forth. I look at the Heights Shopping Center, the former Dearborn Drive-In. There's a lot of vacancies in there, and I don't know if the Frankel Group asked tons of money for that. They lost the Dollar Tree that used to sit in that corner, but they typically always have a lot of, at least, especially when we had that recession, a lot of businesses were empty over there, and we see a lot of people moving. But those are the kind of things I hope that we're looking at from a point of view of serving the best interest of this city, honest to God. And so I think we're going to tackle them. I hope you tackle them. Is one person going to do it? No. One person's not going to do it. It's going to take really a great effort, okay? And honestly, you're in the catbird seat right now. You're the Speaker of the House, literally. You're going to honestly have a key role, and I hope you live up to that position. And if not, I hope the council people challenge you to get involved in heated discussions, if that's what it takes. And I appreciate you bringing up the budget thing that you did. If that's part of making things more transparent for people, maybe that's what will get them involved and let them know what their stake is in terms of what the city's doing, maybe they will get out to vote. And maybe we should explore ways to get people to get out and vote. I don't know what the incentive is, but that's your job, and I hope you fulfill it.
Robert, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Rob.
Anyone else?
I just, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add a little bit of a comment, Robert, Council Robert. I'm sorry. We have a responsibility, obviously, as city council people, to make things better in the city, no doubt about it. And that's the main reason that I personally ran, and I know that's the same thing a lot of us here on the table. But one of the things that I observed watching it for the last year, sitting here, was a lot of us versus them type of mentality. And I think all of us are going to have to take a responsibility and deal with each other much better, much better tone, maybe, much less emotions. Everybody here has, obviously, good intentions, otherwise they wouldn't be here. And as you mentioned earlier, it's not the pay that everybody decided to do this. And everybody wants everything that's in the best interest of the city. But I think at the same time, the residents, too, one of the things that I noticed, you know, sometimes the tone wouldn't be in the right direction, and what that creates is an argument type of situation, where it's a, you know, them versus the city council people sitting here on, you know, in these chairs. So I think all of us have got to take a responsibility to make things, obviously, for the better, and just have much better communication. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn? No move, Mr. Chairman. Support?
Second.
Aye. All those in favor? Aye.